Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. This is also the Commissioners Reorganization Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Veterans and Fair All Surfaces of Justice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Regan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Nominations are open for President of Delaware County Commissioners.
I make a motion to nominate Sherri Regan as President of the Commissioners.
I'll second it.
Any other nominations?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome to everybody to our Monday, January 7th, 2019 Commissioners Meeting. We've had Mr. Ray Kraft take care of the first items, and we do have some appointments that we need to...
Do the motion for the Vice President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'll make a motion to make Sherri Henry Vice President of the County Commissioners.
Thank you. I'll second them down.
Any other nominations? Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes. Now we can continue. So, appointments, Mr. Brooks has been helping us get these listed. How would you like to have this read, or...
There are two lists, Madam President. One list is for the appointments that are annual. These are offices that are annually appointed, and the second list is for the offices and for the departments and/or boards that are, have terms on them.
I'd make a motion to accept all appointments on both lists.
Do we want to read the list?
Yeah, I want to.
Yes, I think we should. We have for the Director...
Director of Ways and Measures?
We've already done...
We did Jeff Brandon already. We didn't do the Delaware County Emergency Communication Executive Board. James is on that. Do we keep going, Sherri?
No, go ahead.
Alcohol Tobacco Commission, Tom Simpson. Delaware County Drainage Board is myself, Clarence Hensley, John Landers, Bill Whitehead, Richard McIntyre. Delaware County Redevelopment Commission is James King. Bryce Conyers, Angie Moyer. Delaware Advancement Corporation is James King. Community revitalization, economic enhancement district is Dan Allen, Leslie Matheson, James King, Angie Moyer, Jeff Rutherford, and Doug White.
Leslie, John, do we need to remove her...
You need to remove her since she's on the board zoning appeals.
So we'll just have that imposition open?
Yes, have that position open for the time being.
We can fill out.
Okay.
So we'll strike Leslie from the back three.
Property Tax Board of Appeals is Sharon Black and Robert Adams. Airport Authority Appointment that was up is Kurt Alexander. We're appointing him. Board of Health is Judy Harrison, Vicki Mitchell, John Peterson, Joseph Russell. City County Council for Persons with Disabilities, Sherri Regan's in that spot. Delaware County Community Corrections is Ms. Moore Hees, David Dickerson, and Mr. Cannon. Convention and Tourism Board is still vacant. Fair Board is Larry Clendenon, Luke Tool, Charlie Walker, Jeff Smoot, Julie Askew, Tamara Reader, and Mr. Nicola. And the Public Planning Commission is Ricky Seig, and I'm also there. And then Delaware County Regional Waste Water Board was Mike Jacobs.
Random motion to accept.
I need to add three to this for the East Central Planning District. The Orion Ballard, myself, and Martin Levy. And that'll be good. I mean, a motion to accept all appointments.
I'll second it.
We have motion, second, to accept the list of appointments as presented, on favor of signifying by the same aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's hope we appreciate you working on those, and we know that we will have some more that comes forward once, oh well, move on. Okay, today we have some tape business. I don't believe the health in Indiana needs to be removed. I think the inmate from mental health, I think we're ready to remove that. Are you folks ready?
Luke, could you speak on this, or care if you can, would?
I'm just here to Delaware County Sheriff.
We've been, I guess, Mr. Commissioner Henry and you have been working on this.
Is that Dr. Hatfield?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've agreed to keep him on for the year. We haven't done any contract or the paperwork, but just have what we'll bring to keep him on.
I think John had the contract in.
There was a draft contract in there, but I haven't seen anything, any revisions to it, so...
Should we just leave this fabled, have you did a yearly contract?
Yes. I'll talk with the sheriff about the terms and conditions of the contract.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes, thank you. And we have a presentation today from the IDEA Conference. Heather Williams at Ball State's here with us today.
Thank you, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I'll be brief. I would like to invite the County Commissioners on behalf of the IDEA Conference Planning Committee to our 2019 event. If you're unfamiliar with it, this will be our fourth conference, and these are meant to bring neighborhood residents together to build capacity and to network with other neighborhoods that have experienced success in the city of Muncie and also in the county. We've had some opportunities to speak with residents in Farmington addition about neighborhood associations, neighborhood association development. Usually we get about 130 to 140 residents to attend from neighborhoods across the city. This year's track and our focus is really education. We have a track on education itself. Whiteley will be speaking on what it means to be an education-first community. We'll have a session on school safety. We would like to have the Community Engagement Council panel come in and speak about the BSU takeover. We have a neighborhood planning session where we'll be dealing with grant writing, how to build a community website. There will be a track on neighborhood partnerships. We have a session about participatory budgeting and the democratization of tax increment financing. We're going to bring in the mayoral candidates and have a meet the mayor candidates session. And then another track on community resources. We want the residents to have access to information about addiction and how they can be resources for their neighbors, how we can support seniors and the disabled, and homelessness within the city and the county. What I need from you all is I need your help in promoting the event to the county residents and the county neighborhoods. We always do a postcard or a brochure. This year, we don't have ours finished yet. We should get that done about the 1st of February. So once we have that done, it'll look similar to this. I will get those copies to you all, and then I need your help in getting those out to your residents, to the individuals in the county that you feel would benefit from this type of informational event. The registration is available online now. You can find it at the muncynearhoods.org website, and I have those, we have that information here on this magnet, so I'm going to pass this out to you all. If you want to take this magnet, take a look at the registration form, take a look at the tracks online. You can take that link and send it out via email to anyone you think might be interested. And of course, we would love it if you all would come as well. So thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
What is the date, Heather?
It is Saturday, March 2nd, from 9:00 until 3:30 p.m., and we always do it on the first Saturday of Ball State's spring break, so the campus is very empty and inviting for anyone from the city or the county to come in. There's plenty of parking, plenty of space. So I'll leave these with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for attending today. Okay, next we'll have the Judge Dallings here to represent the juvenile court's probation in CASA.
Good morning, Kim Dalling, Judge Circuit Court 2. Emily's going to pass out some information for you. This has to do with the internet use at juvenile court, and before we get to that sheet, I want to address first the issue of security. So I want to thank you very much for providing the equipment out at juvenile court. Everything is up and running and installed and working well, and so we truly appreciate that. One of the other needs that we've identified is we need to install bullet-resistant material to the front of the bench. All the benches in the Justice Center have that bullet-resistant material. It had to be added later after those benches were installed, and we've discovered that there is no such material on the bench at juvenile court. So we're getting an estimate on that. I'd really hope to have that by today, and I don't. I've been told it's going to be roughly $3,000 to install that, so I'd like to request that. And then I can move on to the internet unless you want to talk about that first. Okay. I asked Jim Fluke to be here too because I can't explain all the details of this, but what I can tell you is we've been having problems with the internet connection at juvenile court. So in order for the court to run, even for our court reporters to be able to do work in the office, we have to have internet capability. And then in order for the court process to run, we have to have internet capability. And several times in the last couple of years, it's gone out. We were without internet for days. I'm going to say it was last year sometime, 2017 or '18, and then it went out again recently. We were only out for part of a day that day, but that was because it was a fairly easy fix. In talking with Jim about it, Jim and Emily and I met, and the problem is the point-to-point connection equipment that we have out there is so outdated that it's going to break down, and then Jim's not able to get parts for some of the things that break. So he has listed some possible solutions there, so that's the document that I've provided to you. You've got really about four different possible solutions to the problem. So I can have Jim address those if you have questions.
Yes, thank you, Judge.
Yes. The situation going out there, we put around the county, we've got a number of point-to-point wireless connections to the YOC, EMS 1, EMS 3. That link to the YOC is the old list of what we have, and the equipment on that is obsolete and cannot get parts replaced. We've been lucky in the last time that it's went down that we've had parts been able to get quickly and fix it, but the main items that are obsolete is the radios, do the transmission back and forth. What I've put on the list there is four solutions. Some of them are quite expensive. I think in talking to the judge and Emily, it's either looking at replacing that point-to-point connection with a new one, which I believe I have an estimate there of about $5,000. The other option would be to have a Comcast internet connection put out there, and then we can distribute from that to the agencies that's connected, which the juvenile probation, juvenile court, juvenile court office, and CASA are all on that link. Within the YOC, they don't provide any connectivity other than giving us a spot where we can bring our network into them. So we have to provide that. And with the necessity now, with obviously being an online application, they need to have, you know, access to the internet every day.
I'm quite surprised. I hadn't heard we were having problems with such magnitude.
Well, it's been, we've had two instances. Last year, we had an instance, I believe it was in about March or April. The wireless link is cheaper, it's a one-time expense, but it's susceptible to the environment. Most of the time, we've had problems with lightning strikes in the towers knocking our radios out. The last couple of times, it's been power supplies on the inside that's failing, so it's a situation that now with their needing of having the access to the internet, it's almost imperative that we look replacing that with one of the four items that I have listed there.
So out of the four proposals, which one are you leaning towards?
The most secure, the most dependable, of course, would be running the fiber between here and there. But that's costly, that's kind of great, in my estimation. The other solution with the Comcast is a viable solution. We do use that in some other locations, and we would put a VPN tunnel between there and here to make that a secure link back and forth, and it would be on the dependency of Comcast. And I would say that Comcast is not 100% reliable. They do go down occasionally, so that's another consideration. The replacement of the wireless is the least cost, and I know we've put a plan together if we ever did lose connectivity out there again, that we were going to use some wireless like Rising cards that the judge could use at the bench, and we could have one in the office for them to have. That doesn't take care of the juvenile probation and CASA. So it really needs to be a dependable link out there all the time. My estimation would be the Comcast.
Of course, paying for it, any money.
There's an ongoing cost there, I believe it was like $216,000.
$216,000 a month.
Who would use that circuit to...
So that's juvenile court, CASA, and juvenile probation.
But that's it, right?
Yes.
Comcast would be fairly quickly too.
The replacement would be scheduled within a few weeks.
Wow.
And I've already talked to them, and I've heard that the issue as far as them installed out there, it's available, so...
Can other fibers be tagged into that at some point, and maybe, I guess it's just thinking outside the box?
That's just going to be Comcast. It's like you have your home, and they run cable in out there, and then that's just site-specific.
Regarding the top?
Oh, the fiber?
So for example...
That would be a point, that would be fiber running between this building and the YOC building.
And then could that be tied into and broken off to maybe the new jail, for an example?
Well, there would be a continuing cost of installation of fiber from there on out to the jail.
But it could all be tagged in?
But it could all be tagged in together, yes.
This is not in the budget for juvenile courts and probation cracks? And there's probably nowhere to find the $216,000?
No. Nor the $212,000.
Nope, nor the $212,000. You know, but I mean, I can't run court without it.
Right.
And I can't be down.
Yeah.
You know, our schedule is just, you know, packed, overloaded because of all the cases that, you know, we've talked about before, and with all the issues that we have with cases out there, and, you know, we have people who travel in from out of town for hearings and so forth, and they arrive, you know, at court one day, and we don't have court because we don't have internet.
Yeah.
So we did the $216,000, looks like we have to kind of find it somewhere within the Commissioner's budget table.
No, no.
Does there, let me ask you this, is there any fees that come in that could assist in?
Not currently. We've been working to work with juvenile probation and the court to try to increase the probation user fees that we're collecting, and we're making progress, but no, not, not on the scale that we would have had like if you talked about adult probation user fees.
But the fiber is just really one of the best ways to go, but just...
The initial cost is there, I mean, over a period of time, yeah, it's going to take us, it's going to take longer to get the cost of return if you go the Comcast way. If you go to the other option, I believe using AT&amp;T lease lines, you know, $1,100 a month, you know, over a period of years, that's going to end up paying for itself, but...
We might want to talk to our consultants.
How long is the point-to-point current system? How long's that been out there running?
I think close to eight or nine years.
Have you been pleased with it?
It works well. I mean, it's, the circuit that's running out there, it's an old one, it's running at a lower bandwidth than what I would like to have, but the new one, if we replace it, would be, I believe, 100 meg link out to there, so about five times the steam going out to there than what it is now.
Right now, we're looking at about $2,600 a year plus the $700 one-time cost.
Well, if the point-to-point system will last another seven or eight years, it'd be cheaper to do that. One time would cost $5,000.
How fast would that take to put in?
The point-to-point, I believe that was 100 meg.
I mean, talking about weeks, months?
Oh, get it installed? I'm going to say probably within two to three weeks.
Can I just add there that if you're looking at that bottom solution, then we also need those wireless cards as the backup, because on the days that it goes out, then we have to have those cards still to run court and have court reporters sort of do their business in the office. So you're still talking...
You don't have those now, right?
We do have one now, is that right?
We have access to one that we can use.
In the event of an emergency?
Yeah, that would take care of the court, yes. That's our backup.
It takes care of the court. It doesn't give court reporters any ability to do any work. And it completely shuts juvenile probation down, and it shuts CASA down.
But we got to look for the money somewhere.
Jenny, do you know, like toward the end of the year, in our utilities that we have here?
We ran low. I don't think Becky's in here. We had to move a little bit of money to cover utilities for the last few weeks.
But we also had that healthy budget and insurance, so we could find them.
$2,600 a month for the Comcast, and $700. And that's one you would prefer, the Comcast?
Yeah, well, dependability-wise, it's, you know, I would say it would be, yes.
You think that, you think Comcast is more dependable than replacing the point-to-point?
Point-to-point is, like I said, it's vulnerable to environmental conditions outside and lightning, and then it could take a couple of days to get somebody on site to repair it.
And now Comcast, when you said it goes out every once in a while?
It goes out occasionally.
So you could use the one MiFi that you have now to go out there and have, so we wouldn't have to do the Comcast and then turn around and add three more of the MiFi cards, which is going to cost us more money a month, too, correct?
It's a monthly fee, yes. $49, I believe, a month for the government rate. Point-to-point can take care of the courts, but the other two offices would be down.
I know they're going to need it, but we need to find what we're going to pay for, too.
We had a healthy budget, Jenny.
I'm sure we can find $2,600 somewhere to transfer money over to. Now, we did this, just say we did this for this year, could you guys have this added into your 2020 budget for next year?
Yeah, I mean, we can always add the cost into the budget, we're just in the councils.
I understand, I'm just asking if you, that's just like, if we did it this year to get you guys to where you need to be when you do your budget next year, just to add it in somewhere in your budget?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
You guys would be fine with that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, that would go with the Comcast installed, the internet circuit for $216,000, and the one-time cost of the VPN appliance for $700.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made. Steve, roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
And then how do you want me to proceed with the bullet-resistant material?
Get a price?
Yeah.
And bring it back to us?
Okay.
And when you get the price, can you email it to us so we have it prior to it so we can look over it?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, contracts and agreements for approval, we have Angie, Mrs. Moyer with quite a few projects there, Angie.
Corning Commissioners, the first contract I have for you is an LPA consulting contract for Bridge 161. This agreement's with CHA. We follow the Endo selection process on this project, and it's for a not-to-exceed amount of $371,900, and we will receive 80% federal participation. This will finish this project up to get us to go to letting.
And I did notice the letting's not until 2020, December 9th.
Sounds about right. I don't have that in front of me.
So that'd be built in 2021.
Does this project took quite a bit longer than, because of the historical and they found artifacts, so we need to follow the process.
We appreciate you working on this all these years, and we're glad to.
We're getting closer.
I'll make a motion, we approve the LPA consulting contract for Bridge 161.
I'll second it. Roll call. Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes, thank you so much.
And the next one is the Endo-LPA Project Coordination Contract. This is for Bridge 125, this is Negro Road, over York Curry Creek. This contract is necessary to receive federal participation on this project. This will be a bridge replacement.
I'll make a motion, we approve the contract.
Second it.
Steve.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
My last contract is an LPA consulting contract for Bridge 125 with Lockmueller Group. We have followed the Endo selection process. This has been renewed by Endo, they found acceptable. This agreement is not to exceed $299,400, and again, we'll be receiving 80% reimbursement, and the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission has approved a resolution to pay the 20% minimum match.
I'll make a motion, we approve the contract.
Second it.
Steve.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry. Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have amended, we need to amend the edit plan, fifth revision. John, you want to fill us out on this, please?
Yes, um, to amend the edit plan, this is just a lot of gauge and it changed some of the, not really some of the numbers, it just fixed some of the dates in there for the jail rehab project. So it's, uh, it just changed some of the dates to correct some of the dates on the estimate of the rental lease payments.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you for looking on this.
Okay, we have an ordinance, first reading, that ordinance, twenty nineteen oh one, to amend the ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh two eight for the Delaware County Health Department Environmental Enforcement Fund. Ms. Baines here.
Good morning, commissioners, Jamie Bane, Administrator of the Health Department. This amendment to the ordinance that we had passed last year to create an environmental enforcement fund, I thought I was creating proper ordinance with the proper wording last time, but left out some key details there. That fund is to provide a route for money to come in and go back out for us to record our unfit orders against properties, take other actions like securing properties. Example of that is our meth labs, when we've had some instances of people continuing to access those same places and we didn't have a means of boarding them over, doing any of that kind of work. So previously, we created a fund that would allow us to spend that money, but we didn't have the money there and we hadn't put any route to put the money into the fund. What we were looking to do is transfer old money for our department from another fund into it as a startup that we would use to record all of the properties that we have on our unfit listings right now, so we can get that process rolling. And in our fee ordinance, we have a means to collect a hundred dollars on each of those properties as well to try to reimburse basically for our recorded fees. So in order for someone to have that removed from the deed, they would comply with our orders, pay that fee, and it's removed.
How many properties do you have on your unfit list, do you think?
As of today, I'm not really sure, I know we had over fifty early last year when we were working on drafting everything.
Keeps you busy, doesn't it?
Uh, one of the concerns is that fact that our, our office, we're still seeking a good electronic solution long-term for tracking all this stuff, but our office still works on paper. So with staff turnover, and our department's had a lot of turnover over the last fifteen years or so, some of these cases, we may have quite a few more in our paper files that we're fully unaware have unfit orders. Those properties may have been sold, there could be people living in them right now. The concern came about when we saw some stuff in the news about homes in southern Indiana that were meth labs that were being sold without any proper cleanup. I can say that when it comes to meth labs, I'm confident we have none of that occurring here. But that opened our eyes to the fact that some of those are sneaking through and people are moving in fully unaware of what they just purchased.
Great, Jenny.
I'll make a motion, we reduce ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero one and ordinance to amend ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero two eight.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
I worked with Mr. Bane on putting this together, so they can get up and going. It may be prudent to suspend the rules to adopt this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero one.
I'll second.
Roll call. Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you, I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero one.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you, Jamie.
Thanks.
Okay, resolution for approval, twenty nineteen dash oh one. Being a, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Delaware County, Indiana, establishing and adopting the Delaware County Title VI Implementation Plan.
Morda?
Yes, Martha Moody, uh, the MPO Director for Muncie, Delaware County, and the Plan Commission. This is an item that is tied to our federal transportation program and the ability of Delaware County to utilize federal transportation funding. NDOT and Federal Highway have both gotten a lot more rigorous in their reviews of local public agencies, the counties and the cities, to ensure that they are properly carrying out the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. This is tied to the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and it includes everything that NDOT wants to see in an implementation plan. The appendices are all from their template, that, I, I did not do those up. The appendices are all from the template. And I did the census research to check on limited English proficiency populations in Delaware County and basically we're, we're like at just point nine percent. So that means that there are a lot of things we don't have to do. So basically, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. But if not, this is just a document that the county needs to have.
Yeah, it was very interesting reading last night. On page five, there is.
The typo?
Well, it's, um, some of the elected officials have been changed since maybe this was.
Oh, yeah, I, I got in and changed, um, Rick and Pam and Tony Skinner. But I, yeah, the rest of them, so if, if I can change those and your approval could be subject to updating the organizational chart. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution twenty nineteen dash zero one with the amendments that Martha's gonna.
Take care of it.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you, Martha will probably work on that.
Okay, department heads and elected officials. Mr. Jones is here.
Good morning, Sherry and commissioners. Actually, today, I just want to kind of give you a year-end review of what we did last year and recognize some of our guys that helped us be successful in that year. So when I was originally, or when I originally took this position, I came into the office with the idea of marketing veterans rather than being a stagnant desk keeper. In the past, veteran service officers typically sat in an office and waited for veterans to find us in a vast, complicated and often frustrating VA system. We have been able to serve over four thousand veterans and their dependents over the last four years. According to the latest US Census data, in two thousand and ten, there were over sixty-five hundred veterans living here in Delaware County. We believe this number has gone up due to demobilization of military personnel worldwide and we would like to extend our services to those who have not been to our office at all. If you are a veteran living here in Delaware County and have not had the opportunity to visit our office, we would highly encourage you to reach out to us by calling us on our office phone or just stepping in. So currently, we, we have three full-time county employees, myself, my assistant CBSO, Ray Wadby, and our educational specialist, Ralph Smith. Uh, we currently also have eleven work studies which are paid for by several VA grants. And those folks are as follows. We got Brian Wilson, Josh Brown, Steve Stark, Troy Lindhart, Devon Hamilton, Les Kimbrel, Richard Benavides, Stephen Phillips, Matt Wilcox, Veronica Hamilton, and Jeremy Sobey. Over half of these guys that are working for us in there are actually seeking education in social work itself. So it's honestly a good opportunity for them to learn on-the-job skills. One work assessment we have right now, which is Tim Miller, he's fairly new. This program basically allows them to be on the job, working with us, while getting paid and getting them ready to go back to school. We currently have four volunteers on our staff, Dwight Fleming, Bruce Smith, Charlie Brooks, and David Swerengen. Uh, in addition to, and then this stream of walk-ins, we schedule over seven hundred and fifty office visits with veterans and/or dependents alone. Last year, we went to over two hundred and forty-six homes, including nursing home visits, and serviced well, well over a hundred and eighty veterans with dependents or and dependents for educational opportunities. Uh, we help advocate for a new twenty-eight thousand square foot, twenty exam room facility that will provide more services like physical therapy, quicker mental health appointments. This facility does not currently have an opening date, but should be opened here soon. Uh, we recently had the largest Delaware County Veterans Affairs event to date, which now serves veterans throughout Delaware County and not just in Muncie, Indiana. Uh, we serviced a hundred and forty-three veterans during the Delaware County Stand Down and Resource Fair. Uh, we were able to get three veterans off the streets that day and now we have reached seven of those individuals able to get employment because of that exact event. A women's veteran group has been established and plans to grow throughout twenty nineteen. Uh, we started a donation, a donation fund to help in-need veterans with issues such as rent, utilities, things like that. We raised a little over twelve thousand dollars for that cause. Uh, if any veterans in Delaware County are looking for routine scheduled transportation, which is if you have routine visits to like a hospital or any other VA facility, our local AMVets personnel, a guy by the name of John Reader, they do day-to-day scheduling for rides, they do your, your routine ones. I want to give his phone number out, it's seven six five two two eight seven zero four one or seven six five two eight three eight seven five two, five two. And then just to kind of give you a glimpse and a perspective as to what we do here locally and why it's important, I would like you guys to, to watch this video that one of our guys actually created, so if something you can like, that would be great.
The Department of Veterans Affairs reported in twenty sixteen that there were twenty point four million veterans in the United States. The DVA also put out another report, an extensive report of veteran suicide from two thousand and five to twenty sixteen. That report found that, on average, twenty veterans a day committed suicide. The report also found that the rate of veterans eighteen to thirty-five years old committing suicide is growing. There are many factors that contribute to this issue. Imagine, for just a moment, dealing with something like this. And now you find yourself at home, discharged from the military and expected to simply return to a quiet, normal life. You likely suffer from PTSD, traumatic brain injury, or physical injuries. And these issues make it hard to function in normal society. Ask yourself, how would you deal with something like that? Would you seek help? Maybe this is an obvious yes answer. But for those twenty veterans a day who are dying, fourteen of them did not receive care from a veterans healthcare facility. There was a tremendous need to get veterans into healthcare and help them receive the care they deserve to reduce this suicide rate. So offices like the Delaware County Veterans Affairs in Muncie, Indiana, are doing everything they can to help make that happen for veterans in their area.
We all have one job in mind and that is to take care of those who have served our country.
Nate Jones, the veteran service officer who runs the VA office, understands all too well how it feels to come back from the military and have someone support them.
It's very important to me as a combat vet and understanding what it's like to be on that side of the, of the ballgame here and then to get back home and wonder if you're going to have a chance. Some of these guys, they come back home with some major health issues, whether that be mental, physical, emotional, whatever it may be. And I will tell you that there was a point in time in my own life that was not necessarily the brightest of days. I was thankful to God that, that someone was willing to give me an opportunity to show that I was a good person and that I was willing to, to come out and be somebody other than what some people probably thought I was going to be. And that's why I'm so passionate about giving these guys an opportunity to really show who they are.
Nate has a staff of veterans working for him, keeping them working and giving them purpose. And having vets work for vets is important because it allows clients to feel more comfortable in asking for help from a brother or sister in arms.
Well, I think it's important to, when you're dealing with veterans on a day-to-day basis, all of which who have gone through very similar situations, it's important to give those veterans the ability to work with people that know a lot about what they're needing or, or wanting or what kind of claims are going on. And there's, there's a camaraderie there like no other when it comes to veterans. You, you don't even necessarily have to have served with that individual in, in a, individual capacity to really already have a bond the minute you guys meet.
Ralph Smith, who works as an educational benefit specialist, mentions one of the strongest attributes of the office.
It's important so that our veterans don't have to run all over the county, different parts of the city. They can come to a one-stop-shop operation and we meet all of their needs.
By having a one-stop-shop available, the office turns a daunting task of finding the correct place to go into a simple one, which helps keep veterans from getting frustrated and lose hope. And when asked why veterans deserve this support?
A veteran is a person who has raised their hand and wrote a check for this country that could include giving their lives for their country. That's what's special.
The Delaware County VA Office has over six thousand veterans in their district. Two hundred of them are considered indigent or homeless.
This past stand-down, it was awesome, it was very awesome. It had all the resources and all the tools that you needed. Not only veterans, but commercial stuff, I mean, soc- society agencies that would help you.
That's why events such as the Stand Down are important. The Stand Down event sought to offer more than just a handout of clothing and food, but to offer education and employment information.
It was awesome to us by sending someone that needs something and able to be, be a provider for them. We veterans, we helped, yes, we did.
I can tell you that a veteran can feel lost after the military and struggling with numerous medical issues in the civilian world can make you feel alienated from everyone around you. You never really get better, you just find ways to cope and to not let the issues swallow you whole. Helpful people like the staff of the VA Office in Muncie are there to offer you support with those dark times. Having people there to pull you away from becoming another addition to the suicide rate makes all the difference in the world. How would I know? Because they helped me too.
I want to tell my guys, I appreciate everything that you guys do and you are actually what makes this office successful. And without you, I don't know that I would be where I am today, so thank you, appreciate it.
Did I see Mr. Hamilton here?
Yes, he's right up there.
Yeah, stand up. Well done, young man.
Amen.
You guys all do a great job for the county and Nate and Ralph and Ray and, and just, all you guys. You guys are in here all the time, I come down to the office, the office is always packed and you guys do an outstanding job, we're truly blessed to have a group like you in this county, so thank you.
Okay, now we need to work on, anybody else from Highway or Department?
Okay, I don't really like following that, but all I've got is just the, um, gearing report and comparison for permits, so you can, just for your information.
Thank you.
You don't have a slideshow presentation, Martha?
No. I'll go over and do that.
We have the tax anticipation warrant also, Donna brought the paperwork out for our tax anticipation warrant. We're going to close on it this afternoon.
Okay.
So we'll need everyone to sign it this morning.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, moving down to the monthly reports, weights and measures have their report for December. And then we have payment of claims, four million five hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and seven dollars and eleven cents.
First to pay, payment of claims.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Questions from the public? We'd like to speak today, please step forward. Make a motion to recess, Mr.?
I'll second.